All right. Seven fifteen, we call the meeting to order. All members are present. We do have a forum. Mr. Kennedy, would you please give us the indication of your place?
We beseech you, Almighty God, to bless this meeting of the Board of Education, so guide and rule over our hearts and our minds that all our deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will and need to the advancement and welfare of the community of Stratford we serve. Amen. Please continue to the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great cause which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so just a couple of comments. It is my belief that the Stratford school system is moving in a positive direction. We've got a lot of great things happening. If you read the paper, if you look around, if you talk to people, I think everybody's excited about where things are and where they're going. So I look forward to a fruitful year. We're just getting the school year started, but looking forward to many more positive things to come forward, and I'm excited about where it'll lead us. And I'll leave it at that. Public forum. Do you have a question? Email request. Katie Kuzlinski.
Hello.
Hello. You state your name and address for the record.
Sure can. I am Katie Kuzlinski. I live on 895 Berberton Terrace. And I'm sorry, I'm just gonna pull up what I wrote. "Till Lisa, I spoke to this committee in June regarding the redistricting. My son Ethan is at Wilcoxen. He's currently in first grade. Last year he was in kindergarten, obviously. I made two optimizations back in June regarding the redistricting. First was about transitional years, not needing to move. I would like to reassert that I still think sixth, eighth, and twelfth graders should not be redistricted to a new school. It's a transitional time. It's a very vulnerable time in those age ranges, and it just frankly would be undue distress for those individuals. So I want to reassert that optimization. I also want to reassert that children with IEPs should be given the opportunity to waiver into their school of origin. My son has an expressive speech disorder. We've been working with the Stratford School District, or yeah, since he was three years old. We went through birth break. He was at Second Home Lane. He received speech services there. He's at Wilcoxen. Shout out to Lauren Finnegan. His speech pathologist is amazing. He's made amazing progress there. I know in my heart as a parent that if he is required to move to Chapel that he will have progress lost. He will be in second grade. He will be seven. He is very aware that he sounds different to those other students that he's with every day. They've learned to understand him. He's made fantastic progress. I do not want to see that progress lost because I know it will be there. I would think that I'm not the only IEP parent that would feel that there would be progress lost if they're forced to move. He should be given the chance to waiver into Wilcoxen so he can continue with his care team. He was also diagnosed with ADHD over the summer. There's more need for him to stay with the team that knows him best, as do all other IEP children. And those are the two optimizations I want to reassert to this board as you continue down this road of redistricting, and I really hope that you take them into sincere consideration. Thank you.
The speakers. We'll move into our student report. Zoe Bernard.
Yes, sir.
Hold on, Zoe.
So there's a couple of others.
There's a couple of speakers apparently. Olga Penya. You go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Olga Penya, 452 Laughlin Road, Stratford, Connecticut. I am representing CARE tonight. We sent an email to the board as of October 14th. I'm not sure if you received it or not, but I'd like to read the letter to you so that it's on record. It has come to our attention that after-school clubs and activities that were previously funded through the ESER grant are no longer being funded. As a CARE committee, we certainly understand the funding for the particular grant is no longer available. We strongly encourage you find a creative solution to fund the after-school clubs and activities. They're highly advertised during the seventh grade orientations. The advertisements during orientation create an excitement to the students to engage, involve, and include it in the school community. The integrity of the district is important. While adults can balance unexpected changes, young children have difficulties with promises unkept. As a solution, the CARE committee is suggesting the potential to use DEI grant funding to provide equity and inclusion and provide the after-school clubs and activities that were advertised during orientation, which included volleyball, men of color, living in color, pinky, and various other opportunities. A CARE representative would be willing to volunteer to help to look at the grants, the grant accounts, and other possible funding streams to find creative ways to reinstate the funding to reimplement the after-school opportunities, which align with the vision and the mission of CARE and of the Stratford schools. We are able to speak more about this at the next Board of Ed meeting, obviously, tonight. However, we'd like to give you the opportunity to begin the process of finding ways to rectify this, as this is possible with our support and the guidance of needed. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Mike Suntag.
Good evening. Mike Suntag, 115 Allendale Drive, Stratford. I'm speaking tonight as Chair of Citizens Addressing Racial Equity Care. And I'm speaking to request transparency in all of the Board of Ed meetings, including subcommittee meetings and special meetings through continued videotaping and recording. Community needs to be informed of decisions being made that may affect their children and have an opportunity to provide feedback to ensure that decisions are effective for the schools, for the parents, and for their children. We have heard that some subcommittees are not going to be recorded. This would be a mistake. That's why I'm talking tonight. I want to make sure I'm not operating on incorrect information. That would result in the community believing they are not being considered in decisions that impact them and their children, and it would further drive division between community and schools, which nobody wants in the end. Thank you for listening tonight.
That concludes our public forum. The other speakers signed up. Zoe, can you back up?
Good evening. My name is Zoe Bernard. I am the student representative for Stratford High School. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to talk about the different activities that are taking place at my school and how we can improve our schools as well as enhance our educational curriculum. Here's what's happening at Stratford High School. Stratford High School is happy to announce that SHS senior Xavier Nacetta was recognized by the College Board as a commended student. This recognition is based on his outstanding score on the school day SAT last year. On Sunday, September 29th, Stratford High students from the Be Kind Club, Link Crew, and Cheer Team volunteered at the End Als Walk with the Alzheimer's Association and made SHS so proud to see the students there, giving their time and helping to make sure the event went off without a hitch. The Be Kind Club was also able to raise and donate $50 to the Alzheimer's Association. We believe that this was a great example of our compassionate and engaged community members. On Tuesday, October 1st, SHS held their open house for the 2024-2025 school year. Over 400 people showed up for the evening that started with an amazing performance by our band and choir. Parents attended all of their child's classes, including advanced, where they heard from each specific teacher. PSAT testing day for our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders was held on October 23rd. While the test was taking place, all seniors had the option to attend workshop sessions that included help with the Common Application, college scholarship assistance, college essay writing help, and a mastery-based credit presentation. This allows students to get a head start on this graduation requirement. Finally, students also had the opportunity to meet with the representative from Porter and Chester to discuss postgraduate programs. Thank you to Mr. Pedion and Ms. Cobza for arranging such relevant activities for us. I took part in the college essay workshop where I was able to get assistance and tips from our guidance counselors with writing my college essay. Spirit Week for our homecoming football game and dance started today. Today was Red Devils Monday to show off our spirit in red attire. Tuesday is Throwback Tuesday, where we can go back to any year of our choice. Wednesday is Dress as Your Grade Wednesday. Freshmen are senior citizens, sophomores are toddlers, juniors are teenagers, seniors are adults, and our staff are babies. Thursday is Cartoon Character Day, where you dress up as your favorite cartoon character without using costumes. Lastly, Friday is Color Wars. Freshmen wear yellow, sophomores wear white, juniors wear red, and seniors wear black. In the STEM department, one of our science teachers, Mr. Velasco, has started a recycling club. Students collect recyclables throughout the day, doing their small part in keeping SHS and the Stratford community litter-free. The Science National Honor Society recently completed their elections for the organization's leadership. They are now finalizing their meeting schedule and getting ready to share their love of science with the SHS community. On the math side of the department, we are gearing up for our participation in the American Math Competition. We have a group of students who are excited to participate on Wednesday, November 6th, and proudly represent the SHS math community. Our math team also had two huge successes these past few weeks. First, they held a pickleball tournament at the courts at Penders Field with 19 participating teams. The teacher participants took the top spot, but there were also some very good games that took place. Overall, fun was had by all who participated and all who attended. Second, the math team improved their standing in the Fairfield County Math League with their recent performance outscoring several strong opponents in the local area. The school counseling department has been working on ensuring that all seniors have been able to meet with their counselors in a one-on-one setting to discuss their post-secondary plans. Many of our seniors are choosing to apply to a four-year state university on their free application date in November. The school counselors went into all ninth-grade Modern World History classes to hold their Getting to Know You lesson, along with learning style inventory and novellons. On October 25th, Betsy Toth attended the CT FAFSA Summit in order to best support our seniors in the FAFSA application process. Dr. Charles Hughes, Deputy Commissioner of Education, and Chris Soto, Senior Advisor to the Secretary of the Department of Education, presented to the group. The Humanities Department is gearing up for the November election with civics teachers instructing students on the Electoral College and eventually moving into the analysis of political campaign ads. Teachers aim to hone in on the communicator competency of Portrait of a Graduate, having students critically analyze the ways political campaign ads appeal to various audience. In the creative writing classes, students are honing their creative skills, writing a piece of creative nonfiction, building on previous work and new nonfiction experiences. Students are actively engaged, crafting narratives that reflect universal themes. On October 16th, the Stratford Care Organization organized a viewing at Stratford High where people from the community were invited. The viewing was a documentary entitled The Right to Read. This film emphasizes how we in America as a nation are facing literacy challenges. Our students are not up to par in reading, and the film mentions how this problem is impacting our local and nationwide schools. Immediately after the film, there was a group discussion session where the attendees had a chance to discuss the film. Many people from our Stratford community were present: students, teachers, principals, parents, police officers, and so forth. This film emphasizes how we in America as a nation are facing literacy challenges. Oh, yes, and I had the chance to participate in this viewing, and although the film was unsettling, I enjoyed the experience. My takeaway from it is we need to do better to improve students' literacy levels. Us as a society must invest in reading, especially early literacy, to remedy this problem. Everyone in my group was on the same page, emphasizing that our school system needs additional resources for parents, educators, and students so we can move forward. Last month, we were asked two questions. One, how can we make the school better? And two, how can you engage your class to help make the community better? When thinking about school, three aspects always come to mind: safety, creating an atmosphere conducive to learning, and a great curriculum with knowledgeable and supporting staff. We are doing well at Stratford, but there is always room for improvement. Regarding safety, the constant ongoing issues about safety at school events and games calls for stronger security procedures. An idea we want to propose is having student IDs for all students. It can include the student's general info, bus information, and lunch information. This way, we know who are students at our school and who aren't. The school should also create an environment for the children that is conducive to learning, where children feel it's okay to make mistakes. That's how they learn and develop. As for having a great curriculum, standardized testing also needs to be reviewed. We should consider the goal of testing, how often do the students need to take this test, and how do we use the information that we gain to make changes that will benefit the students. In addition, standardized testing, mental health programs, phone policies, and other school policies have been constantly changing every few years. Constant change affects not only students but our staff as well. It is always beneficial to review the curriculum and strategies that we have so we can evaluate what works and what doesn't. However, we also need time for effective data. Consistency allows for growth and is needed. For example, materials, books, and programs that were chosen to teach. We need to give a chance to the teachers and students to familiarize and assimilate themselves with the content before moving on to the next. For the second question regarding engaging our class, we have numerous leadership groups who diligently strive to improve our community. Yale Inspired Ed, Link Crew, Student Council, and Be Kind are just a few of the leadership groups we have here at SHS. Each group does their part to ensure we have an engaged community. We also think that connection is crucial between upperclassmen and underclassmen. As older students, we strive to create a safe and welcoming space for the middle schoolers to transition from middle to high school. We need to foster better communication with the students, which can be done through a mentorship program. At Stratford High School, we are working on creating a new club, Living in Color. Through our new leadership group, we can connect with the local middle school to make sure each student has an upperclassman mentor they can go to if they need anything. With the help of Link Crew, we can expand this mentorship program to include all the freshmen. This will allow a smoother transition for the younger students and can even encourage strong friendships. On the athletic front, the Stratford Athletic Department recognized their September Athletes of the Month sophomore Dylan Assuncheon has had a wonderful season and led the boys' cross-country team to states. Mary Gay Sutton is the captain of the girls' swim team and has qualified in several events for the SWCs and states. The Southwest Conference created a short film promoting good sportsmanship from players, coaches, and spectators. A student athlete from each of the 14 SWC teams collaborated in later active roles in the video, which will be sent to the CIAC. Junior swimmer Katie Raphaeli was Stratford Student Athlete Representative. Junior golfer Max Owen medaled in the SWC championships with a third-place finish. Girls' volleyball qualified for the state tournament and will play at Bristol Central in the fourth round. Boys' cross-country team had two athletes finish in the top 40 in the state out of 175 runners. Dylan Assuncheon finished 17th, and Zachary O'Toole 39th. This Friday's football homecoming game, this Friday is football's homecoming game versus New Milford. Along with Spirit Week, there's also our annual pep rally Friday afternoon. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Bernardo, and it is a pleasure to speak with you this evening. At Banel, we are busy wrapping up the first quarter with lots of activities. You may notice that Dr. Graff is not in attendance this evening. That is because she is with Mr. DeLapiano and a team of Stratford educators at the Barr Foundation Ball convening in Massachusetts. The Stratford Public Schools was recently awarded a fourth grant with the Barr Foundation. For the next three years, the focus will be on the high-quality task construction. In our STEM department, on November 6th, Banel math students will be competing in American Math Competition sponsored by the Mathematical Association of America. Math courses have gotten off to a strong start at Banel. And underclassmen have taken NWEA and PSAT to better understand their personal progress in math skills. In science, neuroscience students completed their first dissections of Sheaf Brain. It was a big hit, and there will be more dissections to come. Forensic students have been engaged in activities on deductive reasoning, and AP students in biology, chemistry, and physics have all been active in explorations aligned to the College Board curriculum. In humanities, 11th-grade teachers are wrapping up their first transformative learning experience unit, and this unit focuses on slam poetry. Students will be getting ready to write and exhibit inspiring poetry over the next few weeks. In our Fine Arts Department, the musical is coming up on December 12th, 13th, and 14th at 7:00 p.m. and December 14th at 2:00 p.m. Rehearsals are well underway, and the show looks amazing. Stage is holding a Nightmare Before Christmas donation drive. We are collecting unwanted adult costumes and old Christmas decorations, such as Christmas trees, ornaments, and garland. If you have anything you would like to donate, please reach out to Ms. Callahan. Stage will be hosting A Pictures with Santa and Buddy the Elf for $5 at the Holiday Fair at Banel on November 23rd from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. The choir will be performing at Radio City Musical Hall on December 4th at 1:50 p.m. before the 2:00 p.m. Christmas spectacular show. If you can attend the show, come support the choir in their biggest performance of the year. The Music Department concert will take place December 16th at 6:00 p.m. This concert features several choirs, bands, and orchestras. Tickets are $4 and will be available online and at the door. The Banel Marching Band has just completed their 2024 competitive season. We had a very successful cattlecade at Banel, having the largest number of competitors in almost 20 years. The band finished third in Class 4A with an 84.5 at Connecticut State Championships in New Britain this past weekend to cap off an amazing season. In athletics, Andrew R. in Cross Country and Marissa DePeronio in Girls' Soccer were named October Athletes of the Month. The Athletic Department donated over $3,800 to the Norma Frame Breast Cancer Foundation during the pre-game ceremony to the Pinkout Football Game that took place on October 25th. Boys' soccer is going into the state tournament, ranked sixth in the Class L, and will be hosting the first round of the boys' soccer tournament this Friday. Our football team is currently ranked fifth in Class Double M, and they defeated New Milford 49 to nothing, and will take on Notre Dame Fairfield this Friday at 6:30 p.m. at home. Student Government hosted their homecoming dance Saturday, October 26th, at Turnbull Marriott. 300 students purchased their tickets for the Harvest-themed activity. On November 22nd, Student Government will be hosting its first blood drive of the school year in conjunction with American Red Cross. The school counselors on October 22nd met with the eligible seniors to discuss the Connecticut Automatic Emissions Program. Details were shared on how to correctly set up their Common App accounts in order to receive information and acceptance offers from participating colleges. The PowerPoint presentation was emailed to the families of eligible students and is also located in their school council and Google Classroom. On October 23rd, school counselors facilitated senior college workshops where the following topics were presented: Common App support, resume writing, developing your college list, scholarship opportunities, and representatives from Connecticut State, Southern Connecticut University, Post University, Bell Academy of Cosmetology, and Army and Navy representativeship were there. And we also had FAFSA support. The virtual financial aid workshops were offered on October 22nd and 23rd. The anticipated release date of FAFSA applications is December 1st. FAFSA assistance workshops will be available for families starting in December and January. The ASFAB Military Entrance Career Exploration Exam will be offered to students in grades 10 through 12 on November 20th at 8:00 a.m. The results of the exam will be administered and reviewed with students on December 11th. I'd like to thank you all for your time, for allowing me to share what's been happening at Banel. But before I come to an end, Mr. Hendrick, last month you asked what the board could do to make the school better for students. One of the major things that the board could do was to be fully fund the budget. We need more teachers to teach elective courses and funding for teachers to run after-school clubs and activities. We also need a career center, since that position was cut three years ago. Speaking from Banel, I can share that one of our greatest needs is a full renovation of our building. I would like to thank Mr. Hendrick for performing a walk-through of Banel with Dr. Graff last month, or earlier this month. Councilman Afraya also conducted a walk-through of the school with Dr. Graff last week. We are hopeful that the community sees the need for equity between the two high schools. You also asked how students can be more involved in the community, and my personal perspective is that Banel students are highly involved in the community, both through and outside of the school. For example, the Interact Club is highly visible at most community events, and I myself volunteer a lot at the Stratford YMCA. And we have many connections to community organizations like Sterling House, Stratford Community Services. Last month, several students were interviewed for a Leaders in Training Program with the Southend Community Center with Ty Sims. And in November, Chelsea from Stratford Community Services will be teaching a teen mental health course in some of our senior health classes. Thank you again for your time, and have a great rest of your evening.
All right, Chris Ford, just some of the, before you go, some of the comments we have been addressing, and perhaps you might like to write a letter or answer those at later time. But some of the comments that you did make were in the process. But I do look forward, and I do appreciate your comments, and look forward to this not being just a one-time response, but an ongoing conversation. But thank you, and I appreciate your diligence and your effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your evening.
And Mr. Chairman, can I also mention that you both forgot to mention two important events coming up. And on behalf of all Stratford veterans, thank you for the luncheon that Banel will have on Thursday, the 7th, at Stratford High, and Tuesday, the 12th. And they're incredible events, and we thank you. In fact, I want to mention too Danny Brennan, who was the Stratford representative last year, is in his second week of boot camp with the Marine Corps at Harris Island. I'm sure he's having an interesting conversation.
All right, we will move into our state legislative report. Ms. Dantzer, do you have anything for us for the evening?
Well, as you all know, the State General Assembly is not in session, so we're in the middle of our election, and none of the committees are meeting, obviously, so there's nothing new to report at the state level from last month. I just wanted to say to the students that left, it was really great to hear all of the wonderful things that are happening at both of our high schools, you know, from STEM work to school spirit to sports, so I think we have a lot to be proud of. You know, and I listened to their concerns about fully funding the Board of Ed, and I do believe that a lot of that needs to come from the state level, and I think that's something that was dropped a little bit last year and something that needs to be addressed, hopefully, in the next session. So I am willing to speak with anyone here about some thoughts for next year, and we will hopefully have a good election this year and be able to continue some of the fine work that we're doing here in our town. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer. I don't think that Representative Gresko is here.
I do have a question comment. We've been focusing a little bit, getting started with the CTE, the career track, and trying to develop that a little more extensively here in Stratford. State Rep. Tim Ackert had held a roundtable about workforce development, so I know it's an issue within the state as well. A couple of issues that had come up. One was the number of licensing. The number of licenses that are available to some of the construction trades is a limited amount. Besides better weather and lower taxes, when our children or our young men and women get the licensing they need, the opportunity's not there because of the limitation of those licenses, so they're heading south. So that was a big issue, and that was a big concern. And that kind of piggybacks into the CTE track, because these kids are going into these trades.
Exactly, yeah.
And we're creating those opportunities, but we're not creating an avenue. And we're creating those opportunities, but we're not creating an avenue for them to fulfill their careers. And then, secondly, is getting some type of a certification when these kids, whether it's some of the, one of the small examples was the electrician's trade. They need to take some type of a mathematical course. And the comment was that most kids coming out of basic algebra have the certification to pass the test or meet that criteria within some of those trades, and so they're not allowed to. So a kid who comes out of high school and rolls right into one of the trade programs or one of the licensing, the apprenticeship programs, has to go back and redo his high school math. And there are a number of other things. And as we create programs to enable those kids, the courses and the programs they take here can get some type of a certification that can go towards them filling their apprenticeship. So it can expedite the process and maybe reduce some of the costs to make it more affordable.
Has anybody looked into the technical school policies and the pathways that they use for the trades and the regional vocational schools at the state level to see how they do it, and maybe we can follow the same procedure or work with them? Might be an idea.
With my understanding that even some of those don't have the same, and we can look a little more into it, but maybe if you can help us too.
Sure.
You know, I know you're only one of many up there. But just, I'd like to, I'd like to maybe work towards it. And we have been talking about it here in the board and about moving, developing or expanding that CTE track.
Yes, and expanding the different pathways for students. Not everybody needs to go to a 2 or 4 years of college. They can also go to trade schools or come out of high school with a career already set up for them. So yeah, that's great. That would be great.
As my understanding, the trade schools, it needs to be a decision made at a younger age.
Yes. Well, I mean, they're starting in 9th grade, so.
Yeah, the decision makes even sooner, so as a 12 or 13-year-old, you have to decide whether the high schools offer some type, but just allowing whatever they do here in the school, if there is some type of, we have auto shop, we have the culinary, we have a bunch of other routes they can take, but just ensuring that that certification is available to them once they complete whatever. Different schools have different areas.
Sure, I'm happy to talk with Representative Ackert about pursuing that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
I go up.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right, so the next item is our executive session. Before we jump into executive session, we have three action items surrounding the contracts. I didn't know if it would make sense, because I'm guessing there's a number of people here for that, that we tackle that first. I don't know what your thoughts are. Or we can just stick with the agenda and go in order, and people can sit up and all that. How many people are here for the contracts? Let me ask that. Everybody?
We're here for everything.
All right, so then we will move into executive session. Pending litigation, Wade Sunday versus Stratford Board of Ed. Ad Al, discussion of possible settlement. That's the executive session. We'll include members of the board and attorney Dugis. Justice Carol Fabian, seconded by Justice Doudal. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, let's press the next. So I look for a motion to return from executive session. Justice O'Brien. Seconded by Justice Doudal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously. So I look for a motion for the approval of the agreement on terms presented and discussed in executive session and giving the attorneys authority to negotiate non-substantive details.
So moved.
Justice Doudal, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Doudal?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Ms. Angela Powers?
Yes.
When the chair votes yes, the motion passes unanimously. So the next item on the agenda is the attorney's report, just so we can maybe allow, as to do this, to get out of here early and ask that we could go out of order, move down to the action items, and discuss the three contracts, and that can be done in public session.
Yes. You have the right to discuss those in a non-meeting if you choose. In my experience, it's usually not necessary unless there's something that you think is necessary to discuss.
And so the first one would be the paraprofessionals. Is that the order, or would you prefer that?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so we concluded negotiations with the paraprofessionals on or about October 11th. Paraprofessionals throughout the state have been a group that have been difficult to fill. The wages are at the lower end of the scale, and I think we're all pretty familiar with the fact that lower-wage positions have been very difficult to fill, whether it's bus drivers, service workers, and paraprofessionals in particular. And as a result, and in looking at your salaries compared to comparable districts, which we always do when we go into these negotiations, at the high end, you were competitive. At the low end, you were not as competitive as your neighbors in similar districts. So what we agreed to do was to eliminate the first six steps on the salary scale. My understanding is you hadn't really been hiring at those rates anyway, because you've had to go higher on the wage scale to find folks. And so we're eliminating steps 1 through 6 of the wage scale. Anybody who is currently, I mean, yeah, currently on 1 through 6 will move to step 7 on the wage scale. And then the other positions on the wage scale, 7 through 14, will get a 2.5% increase from where they are now.
That's the nurses.
I apologize, I grabbed the wrong file. Thank you.
Should've just stayed with nurses.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so my apologies. So what we've agreed to is a four-year contract. This and the nurses go back to July 1 of 2024 as opposed to teachers, which I'll get to in a moment. And what we agreed to with the paras is a 2.5% across-the-board wage increase for the first year, a 2.5 percentage increase for the second year, a 2.5% increase for the third year, which is effective, which is a 26, 27 year, and then a 3% increase for 27 through 28. We're also agreeing to a $1 an hour stipend for those paraprofessionals that are assigned to a self-contained classroom. In addition, we are bumping up the cost share contribution. It'll be 18 and 1/2% for the first year, goes up to 19%, and goes up another half a percent in the third year, and stays at 19.5% for the fourth year of the contract. There've been a couple of language increases or changes to the contract, nothing really substantive. Those are the essential terms and conditions. For example, we increased the probationary period from 60 to 90 days. We've increased the number of days from 3 to 5, at which somebody is out before they've got to produce a doctor's note. And a couple other clarifying provisions, but those are essentially the terms of the agreement, the primary economic terms.
Ms. Meany, do you have anything to add?
No, actually, I think we really did a very fair job, a very competitive contract in the end. I am pleased that it's four years.
Because we don't have to do this again for 40 years?
Well, quite frankly, I think our, the staggering of our union contracts have been in such that we end up with three or four in one year, which can be challenging time-wise for the administrators that are involved, but equally as important, it becomes costly in our budget. So to stagger them a little bit is helpful.
Do we have any questions?
And just about reporting the day before the start, is that so they can attend the convocation?
Correct. Any other questions? So you'll be looking for a motion to approve?
Correct.
Correct.
It would not be convocation. Correct. It would just be the day before. The students actually report just.
Yeah, it was going to, the reason we're having them come the day before is so they can be prepared to receive their students that day, be able to review their ITs and the needs, and be prepared to do their job.
Any other discussion? What's your motion to approve? By Mr. Carol Fabian.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cormier. Any further discussion? Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Doudal?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Ms. Angela Powers?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, opposed by the best name is. Next would be, whichever you prefer, but the agenda, it is the Board of Stratford Education Association.
Sure. As the board knows, we generally negotiate teacher contracts a year ahead of time. That's based on the statute, which requires us to do that. It's usually the most significant impact on your budget, and that's why the law sets it up that way. So this is for a contract that would begin July 1st of 2025. The agreement that we reached with the teachers, let me just first say that during the course of negotiations, unlike we see in the non-certified area, we get a lot of, there's a lot of negotiations that happen in a short period of time, we get a lot of information about what's been going on with settlements around the state. During these negotiations, based on that data, we were aware that contract, teacher contracts were settling in the area of 4.4% a year when you take the general wage increase, also the cost of step movement that's involved. So mindful of that, what we agreed to was, we reached an agreement that would result in a cost to the salary account of 4.4% a year. In the first year, what we agreed to was a 3.68 increase to the top step only. The other steps stayed the same, but anybody who was on step would still advance a step. And when you combine the increase for the top step only, remember those folks aren't getting step movement, so that's what their increase is, with the cost of step movement, that resulted in a 4.4% increase to the salary account. Similarly, the next year, when what we did, what we agreed to is instead of just increasing the top step, we increased all the steps by 2.45%, and then advanced anybody who wasn't already at the top step a step. And again, the total cost of that to the salary account was 4.4. And then in the third year, it was a 2.29% general wage increase plus step movement, and again, amounts to a 4.4% increase to the salary account. We've continued to track teacher settlement data this year. The settlements are actually now slightly above that number, but certainly what we agreed to is consistent with what's happened with other districts. It helps to keep you in the same place relative to other districts in terms of where your salaries fall. And of course, if we ended up in binding arbitration, arbitrators look to those numbers, so I'm confident that those numbers are good numbers. A couple of other things I want to point out. We also agreed to a 15-minute increase each day in the teacher workday and to the student day, importantly. And that results, I had done the math, but I think it was something like 38 hours or more a year of teaching and learning for the kids. And given your status, we thought that was, you know, a real positive development moving forward. On the insurance side, we agreed to two things. The first is as a feature in insurance, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, called prior authorization on medications, and that's among other things, to make sure that you're getting the most appropriate medication for whatever particular therapeutic need that you have is. And that was recommended by the insurance company, by the insurance broker that you use, and the teachers have agreed to that. The only caveat we had there is if somebody has an existing prescription, they're not going to be subject to prior authorization because they already have it. But we're anticipating some decent savings to the district as a result of that. Combining that with the fact that the teachers have agreed to work 15 more minutes a day, which includes 15 more minutes student contact, we agreed to freeze the cost share at the 20% it's at now. You'll still see savings in the prior authorization requirement that's being implemented, but it's also locking in the teacher cost share at 20%, which obviously is beginning to get to a fairly substantial number. Few other changes that I would note in there, increasing bereavement days from 4 to 5. 5 is more typical. And of course, you could argue there's no magic number to what bereavement requires. We have also developed the ability for teachers, if a teacher has exhausted their sick leave and they have a catastrophic medical situation, it allows teachers to donate to that. It's a little different than another concept you might hear called the sick bank, where people just put time in and we use it when they need it. This is for a more specific kind of situation, and we agree to that. The rest is, I would characterize essentially as clarification and cleanup. And, you know, the other piece is clarifying that the first day back for teachers, they can't be assigned in meetings. It's for preparation of classrooms unless, the only thing that can be required is convocation. That's what I was thinking of before when I responded. So those are, those are the primary terms and conditions. I think they're consistent with where settlements are. I think it positions Stratford particularly in terms of providing more in-seat learning time for kids. And I would just also comment that it was a very And I would just also comment that it was a very collaborative negotiation process. I think both sides came out of feeling we did some good work. And based upon that, I would recommend your approval of the contract.
Can you, I tell you, with the hourly rate?
Yeah, just, there's miscellaneous hourly rates in the contract. The hourly rate currently, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, it's like curriculum rating.
Exactly, exactly. It's currently $33. Frankly, the state average by my research and estimates currently is more in the neighborhood of $42 to $45. So we agreed to increase that. Hey, I would have a better sense, but my guess is it's not going to move the budget needle a whole lot.
No, you do have a budget line for curriculum writing, and it really is a very, very small percentage of your total budget. That impactful is the financial cost.
And I, just one more. Maybe you could clarify. I was not involved in the negotiations. I have family members in the union. And our bylaws, we're kind of working through them and trying to get. Should I recuse myself from the vote? I have no.
You know, the rule of thumb is really you have to have a personal financial interest. So, you know, if it were a spouse, then you should recuse yourself. If it is a daughter who's not counting on you for financial support, then there really is no financial benefit to you. So you don't have to in that case. I would say most people would probably, just out of an abundance of caution, accuse themselves anyway, but you don't have to do it unless it's a member of your household.
So then I will accuse myself on this vote. Mr. O'Brien, are you?
Okay.
Not the same households.
Okay, okay. Was any, any other comments or questions for us to do?
Just one quick, just a minor on the donation. Are the teachers allowed to donate from their, from their sick leave or just from their personal time?
Sick leave.
Because other, it's great, because other districts, some of the districts don't allow it. They can only donate their remaining personal time.
Sick leave.
Question on the special education caseload description. That's specified in there, like?
Yeah, there's.
The numbers there?
I'm sorry?
Like the numbers, like I know with special education and caseloads, I know from my experience and my position in my job, they just continually increase. And so do we have like numbers as to where?
We don't, we don't do it by student. We do it by hour. So there's a formula that we use to calculate an appropriate number of hours of service, because it's not per kid. You may have 22 kids on your caseload with very low hours, right? But you may have 10 kids on your caseload with extensive hours. So we do our calculation based on service hours.
Okay, so we set a number on them? Do we know what that number is?
The number depends on which part of PBS you are working with. So there's a recommended number for speech and language pathologists, a recommended number for special education teachers, OTs, PTs. So I can send all those to you.
And then increased time, that's also increasing to the students. So we're adding about 15 minutes to school day, so that will just be tacked on to the end of each school day. So like, for instance, high school will be 7:30 to 2:15 each day then?
No, we are going to add 15 minutes, but we're going to do it respectfully by putting a committee together to talk about the best time of day to add those, whether it's morning or afternoon. So we'll have input from everybody in order to do that in a way that is respectful to the needs of our community.
Speaking from the high school perspective, 7:30 is early, isn't it enough?
Yes.
Just assumed the end of the day would make sense.
But I don't want to make that choice for everybody.
So and as per our bylaws, a vote in the affirmative, the majority would be all seven members. In this case, it's three to three. But if there was only five members voting, it would still need to be four members of the affirmative to pass. So it's just one clarification. So.
Can I just say, I just want to say that this process was extremely collaborative, and I am honored to have been a part of working with the teachers' union and with the administrative group. It truly was a very rewarding process to go through. And I am impressed that we were able to collaboratively work together to come up with an agreement.
So then I guess we'd need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Carol Favier. Second by Ms. Angel Powers. We'll call vote, Ms. Angel Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
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 And I will refuse myself, so the motion will pass 6-0.
Okay, well, I've already explained nurses to you. Sorry, I had my stuff organized in a different order. You know, as I alluded to before, we looked at, for the nurses, we looked at the market. And at the low end, you were not particularly competitive salary-wise. At the high end, you were. So we're eliminating the first six steps of the salary scale. You're not even hiring nurses at those steps, as I understand it, anyway. And then in addition to that, those people currently on steps 7 through 14 will get a 2.5% increase the first year. Anybody who is on steps 1 through 6 gets, moves to step 7. So that occurs year one, and that's the end of any sort of adjustment, if you will. And then in year two, it's a 2.75% general wage increase. And then in year three, a 3.0% general wage increase. There are a couple changes in terms of the insurance. Minor point, life insurance was increased to $50,000. The health insurance, we added the same deductibles that teachers have, which are slightly higher than the deductibles of $2250 and $4,500. Now we're bumping them up to $2,500 and $5,000. The cost share contribution currently at 18.5%. Will go at a half a percent the first year, half a percent the second year. And then is frozen at the 19.5% for the, for the last two years of the contract. The one thing I will tell you is that the teachers were, I'm sorry, the nurses were supposed to ratify the contract today. I was supposed to get an email or a text message. I haven't received anything yet. Whereas the other two contracts have been ratified by the respective unions. I have not received notification. My suggestion would be to go ahead. Normally, it's customary for the union to approve the contract first, and then we bring it back to you. Nothing in the law requires that. My suggestion, save time and not having to come back and do this again, is you approve the contract. And if for some reason they don't, well, then we'll be in arbitration. Or I'll be coming back to you with something different. But I would, I would recommend approval of the nurses' contract because again, it, it brings in line the salaries, particularly at the lower end with the market. My understanding is, you know, there've been some open positions and a little bit, some difficulty in filling those positions as a result. And this should help with that.
First, I just want to say that though, you may not have heard that they ratified it. They did have the majority of their union during negotiations sitting in, which is a good thing. So they seem to all be pretty much on the same page. So let's hope that's a non-issue. Also, just so the board is aware, there's very few individuals that are affected by that lower, by that jump to the step seven. There were, I believe, three. Most, as Attorney Duke has just pointed out, have been hired at higher salaries because our starting salaries were incredibly low. So I think this is an excellent opportunity to kind of become more competitive in an area where every school district is struggling to fill school nurse positions. And we do currently have two vacancies. So we are anxiously trying to fill those. We do have contracted individuals in them, so the schools are covered. But it is important. Overall, I think the economic package here is reasonable. And I do feel that it's a very solid agreement at this point.
Nothing further?
Any other questions? I don't know for motion to approve? Pending, pending nurses' union ratification. One by Ms. Vidal.
I can.
Second by Ms. Angel Powers. We're ready to have discussion. No, although, Ms. Angel Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Ms. Vidal?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Favier?
Yes.
Chair of OTS, yes, motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Punch out, so we can. Thank you for all your efforts on all these. So move on to the superintendent's technical report.
So good evening. I'm going to start with some really positive information. I want to start by bringing an important week to everyone's attention, American Education Week. This year, American Education Week will be observed from November 18th to November 22nd. This annual celebration was established in 1921 by the National Education Association and the American Legion, who organized it as a response to concerns about educational access. Over the decades, it has grown into a national tradition that honors the commitment and hard work of our educators and our support professionals. So during American Education Week, we celebrate not only the extraordinary contribution of our teachers, but also the invaluable roles played by every member of our educational community, from our administrators to our custodians, nurses, to counselors, to par educators and volunteers, all of whom share a common purpose, to nurture and uplift our students. Education is at the heart of our community, and I truly believe that in Stratford. And it is through the collective efforts of our teachers, our support staff, our families, and our community members that we ensure that every student has access to a quality education. So as we approach American Education Week, I encourage all of us to reflect on the power of partnership in education and to think about ways to recognize those who dedicate themselves to fostering the potential in every child. In honor of that week, we are going to be running some spotlights of our incredible employees, highlighting their dedication and the positive impact they make every day. So I encourage everyone to keep an eye out for these special recognitions as we showcase the talents and the commitment of our Stratford team. With that, it is my privilege, and since you're all three here, I'm going to give it to all three of you. It is my privilege to offer this proclamation to the SEA. May the upcoming celebrations of American Education Week remind us all of the deep impact the educators and the educational support professionals have on the lives of our students and our community. So thank you for all you do. So I'll even give you hugs. I know, this is really weird.
And because the superintendent promised that that presentation would be so very short.
I want to. Next, my executive report shifts towards the alliance. Right now, our leadership team is preparing for our first Alliance District visit by the state. I want to keep you all in the loop of all the things we've been working on and how lucky I am to have such a hardworking and supportive team. Our team has been focused on completing a comprehensive data review to ensure we accurately reflect the strengths and needs within the Stratford Public Schools. The Alliance District Beginning of Year Resource Allocation Review is an essential part of the efforts to maximize the equity and effectiveness in our resource distribution. This week, we are finalizing a required PowerPoint presentation, which has specific focus areas that include examining our district's demographics, recent assessment data, attendance and behavioral data, and staffing information, particularly vacancies and teacher attendance. A core component of this review is identifying any resource allocation inequities, understanding the trends in our data, and analyzing subgroup performance to ensure we are supporting students effectively. Our team is also engaged in deep discussions around significant trends and outliers that impact student achievement and performance. Through this process, we are developing critical questions that'll guide our next steps in resource planning and highlight areas where further support may be necessary. So I look forward to sharing with the Board of Ed more after the Alliance visit of this is ongoing work that strengthens our commitment to student success and aligns with our district's strategic priorities. So I thank you for your continued support. And I am going to bring back to you after the visit what comes out of all of this work with the state. Now I'm done.
I just meant that that presentation. Was there, was there something, Vidal, something I put with Vidal? Letter we received, and you had asked that we do a letter of amazement, or?
Yeah, we did, we received, are you speaking of the the investigation that went into Title IX and the services for all the students within Vidal? Is that where your words of the NEASC accreditation?
Yes.
So we had two good reports that were done. They came in to look at Vidal and Stratford High School first to make sure we are equitably distributing our resources for our school sports and our services. And it was deemed that we have appropriate fields for everybody and appropriate supports in there. And then we also received the NEASC accreditation report that was wonderful. And if you all haven't had it, I'll make sure you share it with everybody.
Just elaborate on exactly what that is? And you?
I can send you guys something.
Okay, okay.
I don't have a poll in front of me, so I don't want to speak in the background.
Did that conclude your report? Ms. Panji, I think you're up next.
Okay, this is the wonderful time of year that we deal with three fiscal years all at once. We, yes, are beginning our budget development season for fiscal year '26. We have sent out information to all our schools and departments with the calendar of when everything is due and also the entire budget calendar for the year, as well as the budget workshops. We've also shared those all with you this evening. They're at your seats, and we will send them electronically to you as well. So stay tuned for all the fun I'm sure we'll be having. But we are doing our due diligence as we do every year. And we do, our budget season is always based on zero-based budgeting, where we start from zero base, meaning we don't just take what's in the budget, look at it and add to it or subtract from it. We actually reevaluate and analyze each line item to make certain that the appropriation request that comes to you is truly representative of our needs. So we will be keeping you informed of that. We are finishing up the how-to guide, which you have received in the past. We'll get that out to you as well once we submit it to our schools and departments. And that should be coming out next week. So as we're doing that, we're also working with our auditors on fiscal year '24. And I know that the board and the finance community members did receive a number of reports, as well as memos from me outlining our year-end from fiscal year '24. And we did have our balance currently, of course, they emphasize that it's unaudited, at $1,553,947, which is about a 1.24% of the total budget appropriation. And I will say that there could be changes to the year-end total through the audit process, but I did want to stress that there are a number of variables that affect the board budget. The primary area of savings for fiscal year '24 remains constant, as I reported all throughout the year, and it was salaries and benefits. As you know, the district experienced significant savings in these areas, primarily as a result of unfilled positions, numerous resignations, and subsequent new hires at different rates than we actually budgeted for. So we've talked a lot about fiscal year '24 throughout the year. Once the audit is complete, and it seems like the town is on the right track to get that done, hopefully timely this year. And I know that Susan Nicholson has been working very closely with the town finance director, which is good news. Hopefully, that will all get cleared up quickly. And I know the auditors have been here, and they will be out again, I believe, later this week as well. You've also been provided with a monthly financial report for September. And normally around this time of year, I'm telling you, it's really early in the fiscal year, and there's limited information to share. However, I did want to bring to your attention a couple of items. First is something positive. The town locked into fuel pricing, which will save us money in this fiscal year's budget. budget. I'm estimating that to be around $40,000. Unfortunately, the timeline for their bids ends October 31st, which really doesn't help us much in setting the budget for next year. So we'll kind of work with, uh, the town's purchasing agent to get a feel for where we think we might be, though I think I'll need a crystal ball as well, because that's a hard thing to predict. But that is the good news. The not-so-great news is we've been watching our, um, utility invoices very carefully, and of course, we've only received a couple over the last couple of months. In reaching out to D B S, our energy, um, experts, they are telling us that we will probably be seeing a significant deficit in our utilities, particularly in our electricity accounts, and that is because the pure tax was passed. If you recall, two years, last year, we had a significant year-end balance in the utilities because we budgeted for that tax, and it never came to fruition. We weren't really sure if it would or wouldn't, so we took the cautious approach, approach as guided by D B S, and we did not put it in there. We could be $400,000 short there, but, um, Eric Bartone, who was at one of our previous meetings, did give us a little bit of a breather by saying we could have some savings in natural gas, but of course, that's dependent upon how cold our winter is. So as we go through the year, we'll be checking all of this really carefully, but these are the areas that I continuously share with the board. We have so many areas in our budget that really have numerous variables that affect them, that we can't ever be certain what our budget needs are going to be. We do our best with our historical reviews and our data analysis. So I will continue to report to the board as accurately as we can, and in November, we are hoping to provide you with a report that has a little more, a bit more meat to it. We are actually working with the special ed office to get a better handle on where our costs are for special education. Right now, we think we're right about on budget. We're holding our breath on that one, because as you know, that's another area that can change very rapidly.
Right now, my educated guesses are on par, but that does not account for anyone who moves in or becomes identified going forward.
And lastly, I just wanted to mention that we have begun work on, on the annual five-year capital budget plan. Rich Ruggiero is gathering information, meeting with each building principal to review their needs. All requests were due in by Friday, last Friday, and Rich and I will be meeting later this week to kind of review it, and then we will put together a full plan to bring to plant planning for its review before it comes to the board for final approval. So we have been busy, but all good stuff.
And I know in the, in the past, the council, as of late, has been going on their capital improvement plan after the budget process.
That's correct.
So that might give us a little window, because we've skipped the plan planning process in the past, so it would be great to incorporate that into.
And that is our plan, is to bring it to plant planning first, and then the full board. So we're good.
Just a quick question. There's a, uh, proposed item for action a little later on, um, the budget transfer that's needed, and also the tuition rates for the company here.
If you'd like me to address them now, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, the transfer I did speak about at the last board meeting, and it's really more or less what I consider a housekeeping item for fiscal year 24. We're asking for a blanket year-end budget transfer. It's part of our annual end-of-year process, and it's to avoid us coming to you with about 80 line items, and it's primarily to eliminate any deficit accounts. And this will allow us to follow board policy, 3160, and abide by the Financial Controls Audit Recommendation that was done a few years ago, and that guided us to eliminate all deficits. So again, it will primarily just be in salary, professional services, transportation. It's just moving, um, line item balances to deficit. So it's not, we're not purchasing anything, year's closed out, all the accou摊rances are set, nothing is changing. It's simply to eliminate those deficit accounts. And with regard to tuition, this is annual that we bring this to you. We calculate the tuition each year after the, um, Education Finance System Report is completed, because it's based on those numbers. And it is a best practice calculation that we utilize. And as you can see, it did increase slightly for, um, the new school year.
Quite a bit more than it did the previous year.
Yes, it did. And I think that was, um, a result of a number of costs, including our special education costs that had gone up as well. So when we factor everything in for the E F S, and again, it's done solely on those numbers. I'm just trying to find my own report of how yours is. So yes, it jumped up a lot more last year, uh, and not as much this year.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, Mrs. Mangini, just to.
Before you, before you go.
Yes. Just to clarify, um, the rate is different based on level, like school level?
Correct.
Is that due to the amount enrolled in that grade level or in that area?
No, we're obligated to set tuition rates based on levels, elementary, middle, high school, and special education. And the total cost, yes, would be based on, it is divided by the number of students.
Okay, because I was wondering why middle school, which is only two, there would be such a larger rate than elementary or high school? So, but it's based on the amount enrolled?
Yes. So it's taking the total cost by the budget students.
By the amount of students.
And then if we put any other students in, they are paying the cost of what it is actually costing our taxpayers.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
Yep.
And then one other question. When you mentioned, um, a surplus of 1,500, that does not include, or that does include the million that we have already allocated for the revenue permit?
It does include the million. As you recall, back at your June meeting, you did, um, move to, set aside up to $1 million for the science of reading. So the balance, the 1.5 million minus up to the 1 million, that balance will be going back to the town.
So, right, 500,000.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Question quick. But that eliminates the, um, the, the cost of, of continuing upgrading the science of reading, which we would have been able to this next year.
Yes, it avoids us adding that into our budget request for next year. That's my report.
Okay, any other questions? So I'll look for an acceptance of the minutes of the, uh, September 23rd, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Mr. Bryant, second by Mr. Caddell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. I'll look for a, uh, approval of the, uh, personnel assignments classifications.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Caddell. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Any discussion?
Just a question. Um, I was a little confused by, like, there was a retirement and then a hiring of the same position by the same person, like, within a day. I won't anybody specifically out, but.
Sort of different position, they retired.
Same position, they retired.
So that teacher retired from, from one position and took a technology position?
That's not how it's listed here. They retired from a technology position and then took a technology position two days later.
I think that's just. They retired from a music position and took a technology position.
Because that's, I was confused, because.
Then, um, do you want to make a amendment to?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to amend, so that the, on page 11, um, item number 500, teacher, it says, has, um, a music education teacher.
So that would, so that would be, uh, so which number is that?
So it's on page 11, under, um, appointments of teacher, oh no, sorry, that one would stay the technology. Um, and then on page, 18, 19?
19.
On page 19, four, number four, would change from technology to music.
Okay, so, uh, G. James Miller will be, uh, retiring from music education teacher at Bannell. All right, um, so a motion to amend that to properly reflect the current position. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Angelo Powers. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. So I'll look for a motion to approve, uh, the personnel assignments as amended.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Cormier, second by Mr. Bryant. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. All right, um, number two, the budget transfers, I didn't even explain it, but, um, can we just start quickly? What are you looking for and what?
Yeah, actually, I am asking that the board authorize the chief operating officer and director of finance to make the necessary budget transfers to salary, professional services, transportation, and tuition accounts in fiscal year 24, and to pay other standard charges. These budget transfers may exceed board policy thresholds. The chief operating officer and the director of finance will report all budget transfers made to the finance committee and the board of ed.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Caddell. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? Uh, I'll go with roll call vote. Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Caddell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo Powers?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, so we've already taken care of three through five, so number six, this is an overnight trip. Who's going to guide us through this one? Are you ready to begin?
I do. I can. Um, so an overnight field trip for Stratford High School Social Studies, attending the Yale University Model United Nations Conference at Yale University, um, January 23rd through 26th in 2025, was approved with a digital recommendation from the curriculum committee. What that entails is, um, our students will be traveling up to Yale University, where they will participate in a mock model U N. Students are assigned a country and work together through scenarios. Students come from all over, including, um, other countries to participate in this. Our students will stay overnight. There are supervisors and, um, security to monitor that, but most of their day and their experience is, um, running through, um, the U N process, and really getting the opportunity to work with students from all over and experience all that Yale, um, university and its campus has to offer.
And, and it's just Stratford High, it's not both?
It is just Stratford High School. I ask this question every year, Mr. Henrick, at the curriculum committee and then in, um, the board. Um, no, it is not at both high schools. Um, Bannell does not currently have, um, this program offered. You need an advisor to be able to do that, um, and I'm just not sure we have, um, the capacity right now.
Maybe we can ask our student rep how we can get that next time. Um, all right, so we would need then a motion to approve.
So moved.
Move by Ms. Carol Fabian, second by Mr. Kennedy. Any further discussion?
Do we know how many students?
15.
15 students. Can't have a Bannell student participate if there's an opening?
No.
No.
They don't have the, um, they haven't been participating in the, it's a preparation for.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Uh, number seven, adoption of tuition rates. Ms. Mangini, or, I know you did it once, but.
Yes, again, you did receive the tuition rates for the 2024-2025 school year, and as it indicates, these figures include, um, all town maintenance, town fixed charges, interest on bonds, but it does not include board of ed operating expenses such as transportation capital expenditures, continuing ed, student tuition payments, cafeteria student activities, and expenses for accounts not in the regular budget that are financed 100% by state and federal grants. And that is the guidance that we receive when we calculate these, um, tuitions.
Look for a motion approved as presented.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Caddell, second by Mr. Cormier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Um, number eight, who is going to?
Can I? We received a generous donation of a very nice and well-kept hospital bed that can be used in our nursing program at Bannell. And so I also want you to be aware that through these two donations that you're seeing on here, I have realized that we don't have a formal policy on donations, so I will be bringing that to the policy committee, um, so that a process can actually be put in place. But for the time being, because these are large donations, um, I want to make sure that the board approves of us receiving these. It is very needed in our nursing program, and we were very lucky. The donation came from Ms. Rosenberg, and, you know, she's very happy to donate it to us.
Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Move by Ms. Carol Fabian.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion?
There's no tax ramifications on that, right?
No, um, we're often asked that, but we are not a 501(c)(3), so individuals who donate cannot necessarily use it as a tax deduction. We will give them a thank you letter and whatever they and their accounts and society is.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Somebody take the next one. All right, so as you know, um, the naming committee had selected Ruby McNeil, um, for the English wing naming. Our original thought was we would put one sign up at the main entrance, and then speaking with, uh, the family, they had asked if they could reach out to their church, um, and donate the cost of a second sign. So, uh, they did that. They, there'll be two signs, the larger one, which the town will buy, or the board they will buy, which is a larger sign at the main entrance, and then in the second stairwell will be a smaller sign, but still encompassing, uh, the wing itself, so. But they, they go to the church, the church, the All Souls, Parochial Mysteries, um, donated the money so that we could, we could purchase that second sign. Um, and I will, uh, make a motion to approve and look for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Caddell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Do you have anything to report on residency or a quick update or?
Um, we are just.
Before you do, yes or no? We have to get off table, so.
Oh, no, I don't have anything formal to report, but I will let you know that, um, I can have something written up in the board at the next meeting.
Okay.
Just to give you an update on the year.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's, it's just table. So, did we ever get a year end?
Yes.
We got a year end last year. Okay, so maybe just, you know, the first, maybe quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, committee assignments, uh, no, no appointments or resignations that I'm aware of. Um, Mr. Kennedy or Ms. Carol Fabian, curriculum committee?
That'll be me. Um, the model U N field trip was presented, um, which we just passed for them to attend. And Dr. Piazza and Dr. Diorio shared, um, the curriculum cycle review schedule that they are creating, um, and working hard at and digging around for, um, and that was really all that happened.
Thank you. Mr. Caddell, any updates?
Yeah.
Okay. School plan and planning, we, um, met, I think you're all aware, we expanded the, the membership to include a number of administrators to help us go through the process of, uh, the redistricting. We met, had some discussions. There were a couple of scenarios laid out, which we'll be discussing at our next meeting, um, October 1st, Thursday of November. We're back on track with the Thursdays, with the holidays, and I. We're back on track with the Thursdays, with the holidays and at Christmas and the summer. We got a little off the, we met every month, but anyway, so that'll be that meeting. Board of Liaison did not meet. Policy did not meet, but we are meeting. What's our next meeting? You know the date?
In November.
Okay.
I have the exact date.
Okay, and I'm guessing we'll have a policy on donations and look at it as well. Athletic Review, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, we met last week. And the Athletic Director reviewed a, just a budget presentation with us. We did ask if they could present at the Board of Liaison. Pam presented some of that data. She will at the next signing meeting. So hopefully it'll be helpful to hear since it is budget season. The other couple things, we did get an update with buses. Buses seem to be going good this fall season, so that's great. And the last thing that was discussed is that the Hall of Fame van will be a joint and with the Shippuden Center by Banel.
When I think, if I can jump in, Mr. Kennedy. The other concern or while the buses have been okay so far in the fall sports season, they are concerned about going forward and if we have secured that van? Or vans?
I'm happy to hear your point on that. There were three that were approved. And quite frankly, it took us quite some time to determine, A, what our needs were based on what type of van, how many passenger, and what kind of license or drivers we'd need. So we struggled with that for a while. I definitely give a lot of credit to Susan Hughes. She really worked very hard to get a lot of information, good information. We have determined the best way to move forward. We've been working with Phil Ryan and the state. They are about to come out with their bid list for those types of vehicles for 2025 models, and they should be out within the next two weeks. So we are also working with Public Works Director Renee Sarah so we can get a purchase order put in place. So we are moving. It's taken a lot longer than I had expected it to, but once we got into this, we realized it was a little more complicated than we thought, and we wanted to make sure we made the right decisions, and we crossed all the Ts without it all our eyes. So I think we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Bylaws Committee, we've met twice in the month of October. We believe that we'll need one more meeting to fine-tune or to adjust some of the bylaws, and then we'll get a redlined copy and an original copy, and the committee will go through that again and then shorten it up and then bring it to the full board for those. But we've been working pretty hard at that, and I think we're making some good progress. Try and eliminate some of the redundant stuff and whatever it is, make it more appropriate. So we will be meeting again on the first Thursday of November, and we're hoping we can finalize that piece and then move it on to a meeting before it gets imported. Naming Committee?
Shouldn't that be recorded, that meeting in November?
It's recorded.
I'll have the last one.
Teresa, you record those, right?
No.
No, video recording.
Yeah, I mean, we can if you guys want. I just didn't want to have Lou necessarily have to come out to, you know, and waste the expense on it since it's just purely a board business thing. Whatever you want. Okay, okay, well, come on out next time, Lou.
We're here for plant planning anyways.
Yeah, so I think bylaws starts at five, so. Okay, yeah, we can do it. And then before, so naming committee, personnel committee. But we also have this triple report card from Kelly.
That's the Kelly Services report that I requested.
Would there be a report this evening on that or is this for you?
You just outboarded it.
And our Assistant Superintendent is here, she has no report.
We did not put that on tonight because we knew it was a long agenda.
Okay. I didn't want her to sit here this whole time, but...
No, but I'm actually, I'm glad you brought it up, Mr. Henrich, because I did note that, like I know in the past, we always had a teacher teaching and learning update by the Assistant Superintendent. And since we have two, I didn't know if they wanted to take turns. I mean, she's here anyway, not tonight, Dr. D'Orio. But just going forward, that's always been...
They will have a report going forward tonight. Dr. Piazza is in Boston with the crew for the bar grant, and because it was such a packed agenda, we thought we'd give Dr. D'Orio a pass tonight.
So Teresa, then I guess moving forward underneath the Assistant, underneath the superintendent reports, if we could add Assistant Superintendent report?
Absolutely.
Then we have CAE.
The only thing is the same I mentioned last month. There is the CAE CAPS Convention on November 15th and 16th at Mystic, at the Mystic Marriott Hotel. And anyone interested in attending, if you contact Teresa, she is graciously, is the one who will register us.
I will also be presenting on Saturday morning at that conference.
Of what?
I am doing a co-presentation with Bertman Moses and two other Assistant Superintendents of Staff and Student Services on special education costs and how to create additional programs within your district in order to return kits from our district placements.
Mr. Kennedy, yes?
No updates in terms of the, but a detailed tour of the new campus, which is really nice.
Town building needs, no updates, other. So just under other, and I know a number of us have taken tours of the schools. Angelo Powers, I think you've hit all the schools. I've hit a few, just want to, you know, it's up to you. If you guys want to see one, it's up to you to schedule it with the superintendent or the building principal. So if you don't need for approval, just if you want to go see it, obviously you need to coordinate it, but go do it. It's a great opportunity to go see what's going on. I think it's a good, it's a good look when they see us coming a little bit through the schools, so. And the other part is on Friday, Friday. Banel is, we've been invited to the Banel Culinary Institute. If you haven't, is it, is any, I know I'll be able to make it. Two, three, four. Okay.
It's the middle of my workday.
Okay.
And I cannot just walk away. I don't want my business.
I know, I know. Okay, so Teresa, if you could let them know that we'll have five members attending to the board. They reached out today, but it's a great opportunity. The culinary program is amazing. They're doing a phenomenal job over there, and there's definitely a need to expand that program, so. But this is just an opportunity to go see what they're doing each night.
I will say though, having attended their CES showcases each spring, you are in for a treat.
Are they doing the veterans' day lunch again?
Yes, we received an invite.
And it's the same program that Ms. Godzimel, before she left, presented on to let you know that there was a huge waitlist, that students want to get into it, and we never have enough space for everyone to have.
We do not. My senior is going to get to take it second semester, third last year at Banel High School after putting in four for all four years.
I think the number's 200 per school.
Yes, there are over 200 per school that are not able to get in.
And I was very disappointed when we did our tour because they were making clam chowder. And I wasn't there long enough to get clam chowder, but I did get the iced tea, so. I look forward to Friday, so. What they done that? Any other, good of the order?
I just, for the good of the order, I did pull up the NIASC accreditation, and I do think it's important that Banel get highlighted. The commission gave them accommodations for their culture of their school. It said it embraces and celebrates the diversity of the school community while also creating socially and emotionally and intellectually safe environment. They received accommodation for their advanced period for allowing students in all grade levels to connect daily. Their pathways were noted as a strength, their raptor system for safety. It was noted for its cleanliness and its maintenance. We know that we need to give Banel a good facelift and a lot of tender loving care, but they were noted for how well it was kept. And the pride in the building, the pride of the staff in the building was noted as important, and they gave a lot of accommodations to just how open, willing, and amazing they were in their round cooperating. So Banel did a fantastic job in showing how wonderful and how hardworking they are.
And you do know that's the first question you've asked in like nine months? You haven't been able to answer off the top of your head?
I do the best that I can. Sometimes I have to go back and look it up. I didn't want to give them a compliment that I didn't have the details on.
That's a great compliment. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah. Just a quick shout out to our Pop Warner cheerleading teams. They will all be heading to regionals in the next couple of weeks because they placed at states, so go along.
And I think there was an amazing article on one of our Banel football students, football players slash...
There's articles left and right from both Banel, Stratford High, and the community, so make sure you're checking those papers.
Lot of, lot of good, lot of good stuff, so. And you're from what?
I'm Nick Sampedis, from the Connecticut Examiner, folks. Nice to meet you.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
Well, we're doing shout outs. Five schools have invited veterans to events this coming couple of weeks. It's incredible. The Stratford Veterans Museum already has 11 field trips booked for the coming year with calls coming in constantly, and we still have enough budget to pay for all the buses.
I did. I just wanted to, I know we touched on it briefly, and Jenna mentioned it in her report, but for those that have never had the opportunity or have not gotten the chance to attend Banel's Calacated Bands, I have gone for many years, but I've attended every year as a board member, and it is just a remarkable, incredible production and show that they put on. I have to give a special shout out to those band parents also because I'm a dance mom, and that's a whole thing, but a band parent is a whole different level. A phenomenal job. The amount of bands that were there were incredible. The performances, just everything. The honor and privilege of presenting those awards with Mayor Wick, myself, representing the board, and her representing the town was just a special night. And again, bravo to our band and our band parents. Spectacular show.
Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passionately.